Good evening. Good to see everyone. We call the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. This is our first month meeting, and we're happy to see those who are here and those who are watching us via livestream, and those who are on their way. I'll go ahead and say that Commissioner Jones did send a communication that he was trying to get away from work, but it didn't look promising. So, he's gonna try his very best to get it, but if not, he has to be excused due to work. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I see evidence thereof. Let us all stand up. We ask Mr. Mosley, he believes in our prayer and our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for all that you continue to do for us on a daily basis. We now ask Father God that you would be with this deliberating body as they deliberate the business of this community. Pray that you give them the divine wisdom that they need to transact the business. And Father God, we want to pause and tell you thank you for sparing our lives and sparing the properties of the citizens of Liberty County during the recent hurricane. We're always grateful for what you do, blessings both big and small. We're grateful for you, and we thank you for it. This we thank you for, in Jesus' name, and everybody said amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mosley, and you're right, we're all grateful that the storm passed us over without any, no injuries, that I've heard.
Yes, sir.
We thankful for that, and very little damage, that we are blessed community once again, so we thank the good master for his armor protection around us. And thanks to all those persons who worked behind the scenes to keep us safe, all the EMA crew and Mr. Brown and his staff, and all the public safety people, a plethora of people who devote a lot of time to ensuring that citizens are kept safe in Liberty County. But I do say to us to keep a guard up, we're in the middle of the hurricane season, it's not over, it's not over. So, keep those flashlight batteries checked and generators checked and water supply handy, all those things that we're told to do, advice to do during this storm season. In fact, I saw this morning the news, they're watching two out there now, so we pray that they will stay away also, but let us be a prepared community. I thank everybody once again for that, the support team that was there. All right, we'll move on now to our meeting. Commissioners, the minutes from August would require our approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented to us.
Second.
Motion second, we approve the August meeting minutes, August 1st, August 17th. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands please. Minutes are approved. Thank you, sir. Department reports, LCPC, Mrs. Jeff Rickenson, two rezoning petitions, so Chair take a motion and go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, show of hands please, we're now in public hearing.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission.
Oh, sir.
I got two rezoning requests for you this evening. The first one is a request by Mr. Jonathan Clark over in the Midway area. This is District One. He'd like to rezone a half acre of land from R8, which is single-family residential, minimum eight thousand square foot lot, to multifamily residential. He'd like to build a four-unit quadruplex building. His property is located next to an existing single-family residence that he owns at 981 East Oglethorpe Highway, and this is an unincorporated Liberty County, just outside of Midway. You can see here our zoning sign on the property, that's Highway 84 going past it there, and you can see the ad in the Coastal Courier. And here is a locator map here, this is Hunter's Ridge Road that goes back into Hunter's Ridge subdivision. This is Oglethorpe Highway. Just for reference, this is Edgewater Drive going back into the schools there, and this is the East End complex here. So, this property is located directly at the end of Hunter's Ridge Lane and Midway. Everything on the other side of Highway 84 over here in the Hunter's Ridge area is already in the city of Midway. This property also already has public water, it's already been bored into the highway and being provided by City of Midway. And this is a close-up view of the property, you can see Hunter's Ridge. This is the existing single-family house that Mr. Clark owns. He'd like to take this other half of the property and locate a quadruplex right here on this property.
So, he owns the other house, you say?
He does own the other house, that's right. So, this is the zoning map, you can see Hunter's Ridge here, both sides of Hunter's Ridge are zoned commercial. This light green here is agricultural residential, everything over here in this brown color is R8, which is what Mr. Clark's property is currently zoned. And you can see the jurisdiction map there, everything in green here is in the city of Midway, the area that's not, I say green, I think that's really blue. But anyway, everything over here in this area here is in the unincorporated county. So, if this is approved and if you, if he goes forward with the project, this will be reviewed under the county building and licensing department. This is narrative, Mr. Clark says he'd like to utilize this property to put a four-unit quadruplex. It'll be a two-story building to make it affordable for any family or military family, and especially, he notes that it's across the street from elementary and middle school. And this is just the plat of the property showing the existing house that he owns, and then this is the other piece here that he'd like to cut off and build the quadruplex on. And this is just a rough accrued rendering of the four units here. This would be one, it wouldn't be four units, it would be one big building that has four individual dwellings in it. Our zoning analysis, does this property have reasonable economic value as it's currently zoned? Yes, you could build a house on it, or duplex. Number two, does the proposed use conform to the Fort Stewart Joint Land Use Study? It does. Number three, does the proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? Comprehensive Plan designates this as mixed-use, and mixed-use does allow for, or does call for multifamily residential as one of the uses. Number four, will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? No. Will the proposed use be suitable in view of nearby uses? Our answer is yes. Number six, we don't think there will be any undue burden on transportation utilities, streets, transit, or public safety because of this proposed use. Number seven, will this create a short-term gain at the expense of our local long-term goals? No. Number eight, will this change cause a domino effect or encourage sprawl? No. Number nine, are there unique historical sites which may be adversely impacted? We have not identified any. Number 10, is this partial in a flood hazard area? It is not. Number 11, is it spot zoning unrelated to the existing pattern of development? We did answer yes to that because everything around it is zoned for single-family residential and commercial across the street. And then number 12, are there unique conditions that support approval or denial? And we have not identified any. Planning Commission heard this at their August 15th meeting, and they recommend approval with standard conditions. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, and the applicant is here as well.
The applicant's here?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Applicant, would you, oh, I remember. Just come again, just give us a two-minute overview of your project.
Well, like I said, I just wanted to, you know, build, just make use of my property, and just build some affordable homes for people. I noticed that a lot of people are paying three, four hundred thousand dollars for the, you know, properties and houses in Richmond Hill all over, and I just want to make something affordable for some families, and, you know, I figured it would be easy to do, and so, came up with the funding, and I'd just like to, like to do it.
All right, so, Mr. Rickenson, was there any opposition to the?
We had some, we had some ladies come to the Planning Commission, I think they were a little bit confused about what was being proposed, but when we explained it to them, I think they were satisfied, and they're not back here today, so I don't, I think, I think they were satisfied.
Okay, if you don't mind saying, what was their inquisition?
I think they were concerned that he was looking at, like, trying to develop on their property as well.
That's cleared up, right?
Well, see, they, what they did, they had several properties, it was heirs' property, so they had like fifty-some acres, but six of the family members divided it. So, when I first originally bought the first property, I had to go in with all of them and do it, and so they all divided it up. And she was just wondering, was my property on her property? And I was like, no, it's totally separated. So, I just got a call from, from a lawyer just now and saying that my deed is in their office, so everything's good and clear. I just gotta get addressed to it and hopefully get situated and get it, and get it started.
Just for our education, if that should happen though, that becomes a civil matter? Okay, wouldn't be something that we would, you would drop at our feet.
No, everything's.
Commissioner Stevens, it's your district.
Yeah, Jeff, go back to the description of the property. Right there. Is that property, what, right at a half acre?
Yes, sir.
Right at a half acre?
Yes, sir.
And you want to put four? Single?
He wants to put a quadruplex, which is one building that's got four apartment units in it, there'd be two on top and two on the bottom.
On a half acre?
Right.
Now, I know you talked about the water.
He does have public water on the site. He'd have to, the nearest manhole that the City of Midway has is about a thousand feet away, so he's gonna have to go down the road toward Edgewater and then up Edgewater a little bit, so it's about a thousand feet. And that's on, that's on Mr. Clark, whether he can, wants to do that or can afford to do that.
I talked to the mayor today of Midway, and he said they will not be providing sewage. That came out of the mayor mouth.
Okay. That's, that's good to know. I think Mr. Clark had had some discussions.
Well, they put me on the agenda for the 11th to do it, and, you know, like I said, they asked me, was I gonna use the city to do it? So, I had the, you know, the funds to do it, and so I noticed that, you know, other areas around the area was using city sewer, so if I was paying for it, I didn't understand, you know.
That was a word from the mayor, Mr. Chairman, board members. We do not operate the city, but they do operate their sewage facility, and that was the word from him today. That was about two o'clock, I had a conference call with him, and he said they will not provide sewage.
Mr. Chairman, I believe, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, his house.
Right, they got water.
And no sewer.
Right.
You only can have one septic tank on a half acre, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And if you got four, would he need four seppants?
If, if the city, if the city would not provide sewer, he really would, would be stuck with just having one toilet.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah, yeah. Yep.
Can you still get by, Jeff, with that, with one unit and the septic system fit on a half acre?
That would be the call of the Health Department. And that, he'd have to, he'd have to apply to them and see if they would approve that.
If it's enough.
Well, there's a septic tank already on my property that's right next door. There's already a septic tank there, the city water there. So, and that's one reason I didn't understand, if the city water is already there, and I saw him doing some other stuff towards near the school and stuff.
Could you speak into the mic?
I said, I really didn't understand if the city water was already there, and, you know, I haven't spoken to the city. They want me to come in on the 11th to the, to the meeting. So, you know, I probably will still attend just to see, you know, and explain my situation. And like I said, if I'm paying for it, I didn't really see if it was approved to do it. I just didn't really see why they wouldn't do it.
I don't have that answer, but like I said, I know for every four hundred feet, you'd have to install a manhole, and your closest lift station is down there in front of the complex. So, you gotta think about that distance, like I say, it's your money, you know, whatever you want to do with it. But I know what the city, what I was told today, and, Mr. Chairman, I would just say maybe we table this until he goes to the city and let the city send Jeff or this board or Mr. Brown a letter saying that they will provide or they will not provide, and at that rate, we won't be wasting, you know, your time on planning, 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 and you still can't go anyway.
Well, I spoke to Mr., I went to Mr. Long's office, and I guess he's the city person, but, I'm not, I'm not saying he's control of it, but he, he said it is doable. So, he's making the point that it was doable, so, but all I can do is attend and see, so.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
As, as a commission, I'm hearing Commissioner Stevens say, it's certainly, it's your project, so it's at your discretion. We can either table it, you know, let you talk to the city, maybe come back, or we can do the rezoning, but you know, you know what the, what, what's the word, obstacles are?
Yes, sir.
You know, going forward, so you may get a rezon and still may not be able to do this project, but it's up to you if you want to.
Yeah, I'm willing to, I'm willing to tackle it, and I think I should speak to Mr. Clancy. I think I should hear out and voice my opinion, you know, at least see, you know.
But you may be considering a serious downsizing of your project based on what?
Yes, sir, I understand.
Let's let him, let's let him, let that be his baby, you know.
I would say let's table it till he goes to the city of Midway.
Mr., yeah, Mr. Chair, I mean, excuse me, Commissioner Stevens, but I, I guess, with even looking at this, there's, there's two things. First, this is for a rezoning, that's first and foremost. He owns the property, it's up to his discretion, you know, if he wants to have it a single family or whatever type of zoning. In my eyes, if it fits the qualifications inside our LCPC, I don't see what tabling will do. I mean, with all due respect, if, if the city, they can't work it out, then, I mean, he'd be, he could still come back to us and get a rezon back, correct? Or how, how would that work? Or, or could we do it on, we approve it?
Contingent.
On contingent to whatever they decide with the city.
I would, I would recommend that you either table it and, and take it up at your next regular meeting in October, or...
Move on.
Or, I mean, you could approve it.
Yeah.
You could approve it if you wanted to, and if he doesn't get the sewer, he's dead in the water as far as building the quadruplex. He's gonna have to build a single family house.
Absolutely, right, right, right.
And he can build a single family house under the zoning he's asking for, or the quadruplex, but the sewer is gonna decide what he can do or not.
Right, so, so.
Come back to the mid-month meeting?
He could, I was gonna say that, rather than wait until October, the week after the Midway meeting, he's, there's another meeting on the 21st.
I mean, that's fine, but I mean, just like, like what we just stated, I mean, regardless of the rezoning, either he has option one, which he builds a quadruplex, or option two, he builds a, a single family, because that's still under the same thing, so, with all due respect, I don't understand why we would table it when it's...
I'm with you, but since the meetings are close together, I'm with you, since the meetings are close together, I'm, I can certainly.
How, how long is our, our next agenda for that month?
I don't know.
Because I'm just saying, I mean, we putting something else on the agenda that, I mean, regardless of what the city says, we're still, whenever he comes back to us, we're still gonna approve it, am I correct? Either he's gonna come, ask about a quadruplex, or he's gonna come back in October and say, hey, I still need rezoned so I can put a single family.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, is to confer, so, so if he couldn't put a single family on there already? That's what I thought, so, so, so if you did it contingent upon sewer being available, then sewer gets available, he wouldn't have to come back.
He wouldn't have to come back.
If it doesn't get available, he wouldn't have to come back either, because he could do a single family, because he's really limited to either getting sewer or having one, one resident try.
Absolutely.
Because you couldn't put a septic tank on there large enough to support?
Two.
Two units.
Because of the acreage.
Up and down, or size, because of the acreage.
Oh, that's all I'm saying. Right.
That's what I've looked at.
So, you're saying approve it contingent upon, if, if the city says no, then your zoning, they basically turn the zoning down.
Then he's gotta do a single family, because he can't put one septic tank on there anyway. To serve one unit. I mean, that's what I was thinking, but, but it'll work either way, you know, you know.
But, I mean, he, he's asking us to approve the rezoning, right? Yeah. I mean, so that's, that makes our job pretty easy. We either vote yes or no. And, you know, and whatever he have to deal with down in Midway, that's, that's on him.
They, they, their decision will either veto or approve his project, and they'll either go forward or it won't.
Well, it sounds like they've already tried his case before they've got the court, so, that's what it sounds to me like. Well, I'd say that just move forward, I, I, Andrew need to table it, if the man needs to, if he goes home tonight and says, heck, what, I'm just gonna build one, and he can start tomorrow morning laying the batterboards. But right now, he can't do nothing, so that's, I'm.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it strengthened his argument when, when he go there next Monday, the 11th, and say that the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners approve the rezoning, and then he talk to them with that, you know, stand on that as he present his case to them, and, you know, and they'll decide whatever, but, you know, I think we need to decide on, on this.
And that's what, I appreciate it, and that's the only thing I'm saying, we're, we're here for a rezoning. You know, regardless of, of what the future may hold with the city of Midway, and again, I wish you the best with that. But then also, it goes back to our, our previous discussions, you know, even on, on that side of the county. You know, we've, we've done a lot to, to increase our water that way, but even with that, I know we've, we've mentioned in the past about trying to figure out bringing sewer close as we can, or as far as we can, because where the world is going now, and listen, I understand sewer systems, you know, from, from that standpoint. Appreciate you, Commissioner Gillik, I, I still remember a little bit about that, but even with, with like the septic tanks, I mean, we were having a discussion about that, and I know it's probably not coming down, where, where they're gonna say we can't have septic tanks in Georgia. Good luck with that, but more importantly, I mean, for us to, to continue to grow as a community, we need water and sewer. That's, that's how City of Hansville is able to increase their growth, because we have water and sewer. And if you have water and sewer, you, off a half acre, you could build, you could build this, it won't be any, any issues. But it's an issue because we have water, but no sewer.
Right.
So, I think that's something that we should be having a discussion about more than the rezoning. But Commissioner Stevens, it's your district, so we'll follow your lead.
It doesn't seem like it.
It, it, we're just trying to, I mean, listen, I would love to see him in two weeks, especially if he wears that master hat again, but, I mean, that's, that's just something else. Just check it off the list, that's the only thing I'm saying.
In Richmond Hill, right around the corner from me, they have four quadruplexes on point four acres.
Right.
And I'm sitting here like, four acres, but I couldn't do it on a half acre, just one.
But the difference is, do they have sewer there?
Yeah.
That's why.
So... So, again, that's why I'm saying, I, I think that's something that we need to have a more in-depth discussion about than the zoning, but.
Like I do understand, this is only, this is a rezoning, but we need to keep in mind what else comes with that rezoning. I don't want him to get his hopes up. I don't want him to get his hopes up.
Yeah.
And when he goes back to the city, so let the city say that they can provide and it's no problem.
He's, he's heard you very, have, have you not heard him very clearly?
I heard him what he said already. He, he said, give my hopes up.
And you still willing to move forward?
Well, yes. I mean, you know, I've had obstacles before, you know, so.
He just kinda looking out for your business is what he's saying, you know. But if you, it's up to you. You wouldn't have moved forward?
Find a way to make one. That's the only thing I gotta say. Find a way to make one, sir.
Mr. Chairman, it is a, it's a re, it, it is a rezoning and it is in the unincorporated area of the county. Which falls under our jurisdiction.
I make a motion that we follow the recommendation of planning and zoning.
So move.
Motion in a second, you're the second. Okay. In further discussion, I think we had lots of it. Hold on, favorite your hands, please.
Now, you do understand you have to go back to the city.
Yes, sir.
And I will start that conversation tomorrow.
I will.
Don't wait till the, don't wait till the eleventh to start the conversation.
I got you.
Doesn't work that way, sir.
Yes, sir.
Build that bridge before you get there.
I'll text you his number.
Well, applaud your efforts for, you know, uh, for developing and, and bringing houses into, you know, unincorporated Liberty County. We need those and we are a growing community, so and have someone who's willing to do it. And, and I heard they use the word affordable, so I hope that is the case, cause that's.
I, I, I love that word, affordable.
Found a lot of that.
Yes, yes.
So, but we appreciate it. So, uh, so when y'all give us some feedback, let us know how, how it went with the city of Midway.
Thank y'all. Appreciate y'all.
Do you want to question, what, if you can put all four there, what would be the size of it?
Uh, they're gonna be, uh, like, they're gonna be two thousand square foot, but like, I think it's gonna be eighteen hundred heated, like a small garage. And, um, it'll be a three-bedroom, two and a half bath. I'm doing two of them with the master downstairs. And then, uh, after I spoke to a real estate agent that I communicate with a lot, she said to do two of them with the master downstairs. Cause if a, if, if elderly person might want the, you know, master downstairs, I wanna go up and downstairs. And then there might be a family, military family that come in and they want to be next to the kids upstairs. So I do three bedrooms upstairs and do it like that. So two of them would be with the master downstairs and then two of them be with the master upstairs.
You almost sound like this is not your first project.
I do a lot of stuff. I do a lot of flipping. I'm, I, I, you know, I, I do, I try to help people out as much as possible. I do a lot of stuff for, um, you know, different charities and stuff. I'm, I've been a massage therapist. I've dealt with neurologically impaired children. I used to teach autistic children. So it's kinda change of the stuff like that, so.
The more you talk, the more we know you. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Y'all appreciate it.
Good luck.
Guess when you think it's gonna be a short.
Chairman, members of the commission, our, our last request tonight is a rezoning petition that's been submitted by EIG Coastal Saltwater Investments LLC. Mr. Jonathan Gaskin to rezone three point seven five acres of land from C two commercial to AR, uh, I'm sorry. From C two commercial and AR one to C three highway commercial. Uh, for a boat storage facility, the property is located at the intersection of Trade Hill Road and Islands Highway in unincorporated Liberty County. This is a sign of, uh, we placed on the property and the Coastal Courier ad. And this is a map just showing the vicinity, uh, this Islands Highway, this Trade Hill Road. Uh, this is actually two, uh, there's actually two tracks on this, uh, piece of property. This parcel here is already zone C three and this property here is, uh, zone C two. And it's got some limitations on it. I'm gonna discuss that with you a little bit more. Again, you can see the zoning there, that pretty much the general character of the area is either ag or agricultural residential. But this piece of property has already got some commercial zoning on it. You see the C three portion of it there. The, uh, C, the C two portion of it there, and even part of this property, this little strip over here on the, the eastern side is still zone AR one. So he wants to zone, uh, this piece right here, all, he wants to make all of this red, which is C three, to provide for the boat storage facility. And, uh, special conditions from the previous rezoning, I just kinda give you a little bit of history. Mr. Stevens, I don't know if you were here in, in Osec, but, uh, the commission at that time placed some, uh, conditions on this one. They zoned it, they zoned it initially B one, which became C two with the, the new UDO. So that's, that's how we got to the zoning that we have. But they also put some conditions on this property. That was only be used for office use and proper buffers, uh, needed to be in place to protect the adjacent property. So I just wanted to kinda give you that background. That's why he's here because, uh, the condition of that piece of property, uh, the condition that y'all placed on that piece of property seventeen years ago. Was it can only be used for office and he wants to put a boat storage facility on it. This is his narrative. Uh, he wants to do self-storage, um, for boats. Uh, then he also says, and all other certain permitted uses, uh, basically any, any, any use that would be allowed in C three in our new UDO. Which is pretty much any commercial use, but his, his initial aim is to put a boat storage facility on it. And this is just a plat showing the property, uh, the whole property. Uh, as I said earlier, uh, everything, the lower part of this property here is zone C two. And this piece right here is, is zone C three. And this piece right here is zone C two. And that's, that's the half that he wants to rezon. So the end, the end game is for all of it to be C three. And you can see here, uh, this is the, uh, outline of the property again, just a survey plat showing. This is, this is where the line is between the C three on this side and the C two on this side. When he came into the office to get the permit to build the boat storage, it was partly, it's already partially constructed out there. This is the permit that we signed off on showing the boat storage facility clearly being on the C three side. And, and, uh, when he actually got around to building the thing, the building has shifted fifty feet over onto the C two side. Which is, uh, currently got your condition on it that, that can only be used for office use. So that's why he's trying to rectify this and get this entire piece, zone C three, like the other piece. So that this boat, he can continue proceed with the development of that boats, boat shed. And this is the partially assembled boat shed that he's got, uh, in place out there as it looks today. And you can just see another view of it there. Our zoning analysis, does this property have reasonable economic uses? It's currently zoned. It does. It's con, it conforms with the JLS study. It's conforming with the, uh, comprehensive plan. We haven't identified any adverse effects on the nearby properties. Uh, the proposed use is in su, is suitable in view of nearby uses. Uh, we don't think that it will create an undue burden on transportation, public safe streets, et cetera. Uh, number seven, uh, will this allow short-term gain at the expense of a local long-term goals? It would not, uh, and this will not cause a domino effect or encourage sprawl. Uh, number nine, there are, there are no unique historical sites that will be adversely impacted in this area. Number ten, this is not in a flood hazard area. It's pretty dry property. Number eleven, that's not, uh, spot zoning or unrelated to the existing pattern of development. And number twelve, we haven't identified any unique conditions that are, that support approval or denial. Planning commission heard this at their September, I mean, excuse me, at their August fifteenth meeting. And it recommend approval with standard and special conditions. And the special condition was that the existing buffer on the property may maintain between them and the, uh, the adjacent residential uses on Trade Hill Road. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, and the applicant is here as well.
Excuse me, sir. Just, just real quick, uh, can we go back to the pictures of the dwelling? I don't, I don't know what slide that was on. With the building on there? Right. Well, why, why was that put in?
That's, that's the boat storage facility.
That's the one that he already, so you s-
We approve, we approved it. Uh, he, he came to the office and we approved the zoning on it for it to be built here. Which is on the C three property, which, uh, allows for a boat storage facility. But when he actually started constructing it, it got, it, it, it moved fifty feet and landed on the, on the property, the zone C two. Which you have a condition on that says you can only build office there and a boat storage facility is not an office. So that's why he's here trying to get relieved from that condition so that he can build the boat, continue building the boat storage facility here.
Right. Cause this is the one that we approved a couple of months ago? Is this the same one?
No.
This is something different?
You were not here when that was approved.
Two thousand six.
Oh, two thousand six? Yeah, I can tell you where I was at. Two thousand six. Man, that was a good year. So basically, you all already approved it. They already started building it.
That's right.
And, but looking at the lines, we found out that it's on the side of the land that he already owns.
Right.
But it already has special conditions.
He, he basically put it in the wrong place, uh, from, from where it was approved. He, he put it on the other property and not the one that was approved on.
Oh, he did?
He did.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. On that one slide, was this the only one that's in red, pretty much on that road within a couple of miles? This on the C three?
There, there's kinda scattered, um, you can see a little, a little pink area over here. And then you can see this is red. There's another store not too far up this way. And then there's some other commercial out further on toward the sun barrier. And then I think there's one over here that's like some kind of a boat facility. And you also rezoned a property for a restaurant over here that never got built as well. So it's just kind of a scattered, there, there's, there's some, there's some scattered.
Probably within a mile or two.
Right.
That, that's.
Other.
Other commercials.
That's right.
Somewhere in there, Jeff, not too far from the Trade Hill Road going toward the coast, there was a gentleman years ago, he worked on boats there.
That's right. Down here, it's, it's off my screen.
Can't remember what his name was, but that's what I was trying to figure out. So it's going this way. And his was already a, it was already commercial.
It was already commercial. But y'all, y'all rezoned somebody adjacent to that about three years ago to build a restaurant. And they never built the restaurant, but it's, it's been rezoned.
So, tell me the commerce, uh, okay, I'm sorry. Let's, let's do it. Let's, let's hear from the petitioner.
Okay.
And then, is there anyone in the audience who was opposed to it? Okay, we'll let you speak in just a minute.
Wait a minute, Mr. Chairman. This man right here can't use a hammer, so he didn't build that.
I tell you, I, I used a lot of drills and drill bits. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, thank you, uh, first and foremost for allowing me to bring my petition before you. Um, I probably can clarify a couple of things, uh, as far as where we are as far as the shed and the positioning of the shed. Um, when I purchased the property from Jennifer Fluinoey, uh, just to make certain that the lines were clearly marked. I had a new survey performed on it, as well as, uh, did a title search myself. I'm a property lawyer. So I, I made sure if I was gonna put my money in it, uh, I had a good, marketable piece of title. As to the shed, um, the, the issue with it is, is that when I, when I started building, um, I went and had it all moved into one mapping parcel number. And, and that was done with the tax commissioner's office, tax assessor's office. And the GIS mapping on it, it, it shows, at that time, it was B one and B two. Well, it's really sort of hard to differentiate where exactly that line comes through. And where I was building, I've got, I had two nice oak trees right there. I did not wanna cut the oak trees down. They're, they're, they're older oak trees. So I did shift a little over. I didn't realize I shifted that much over. I thought I was, I might be within ten foot of the line. Uh, and then obviously it's brought my attention that I shifted too far over. And of course, I was issued a stop work order and I, I immediately stopped work. However, note, the, the other side in red, I mean, it is, as it sits right now, it's, it's C three. What I'd like to do is get it all one parcel where I don't have to run into that problem again. I'd also like that restriction lifted off of the property because I just don't see a, an office building survi- surviving out there right now. I mean, I know there's a lot of industrial development and everything else, but, you know, I, I don't see what, how that can survive on that piece of property. And, and, and pretty much restricting to probably about three acres. I think that one parcel is like three point seven acres at one time. To restrict it down just to an office building, uh, is one of the reasons, uh, I'd like to have that restriction removed.
And that was done under the previous owner?
That was done when Jennifer Fluinoey, uh, rezoned it back in two thousand six. And of course, looking at the property records, uh, you know, with the clerk of courts and I, I looked at, I mean, I, I researched. That's all I do. That's what I do for a living. I did not see any restriction at the time which I purchased the property as far as it being restricted to office use only. It come to my attention that it was in the minutes of the, uh, meetings of the county commissioners. Uh, back in January, I believe it was, two thousand six. And of course, I, it, you can only really go back five years on the minutes, uh, without actually coming in and digging. Computer search, you can go back about five years on the minutes. Uh, so I, I, I didn't feel it was really a part of the public record at that point. However, um, at the mercy of the county, uh, I, I shut down, you know. And I said, well, if it's there, it's there. It needs to be addressed, but I'd like to have it all in one parcel. Now, the buffering on it and, and going before, um, the board before I got here, uh, the zoning and commission board, the zoning board, I'm sorry. Um, the buffer was, I agree, you know, I, I, there's a thirty-foot setback around this property anyway. Nothing can be built thirty foot off of that line, uh, within that thirty foot. And also the buffer would be, uh, agreed upon the twenty, twenty-foot vegetation buffer. But, you know, within that thirty foot, I, I don't see anything being built and more likely not, it'd be a manicured vegetation. Uh, once I get the boat storage up, I, you know, I plan to go in and do some landscaping and everything else. The reason I asked for the full benefit of the C three zoning is, is because there's really no guarantee that, that this boat storage is gonna provide. Uh, it may be successful, it may not be successful. Uh, I may have to say, hey, you know, I'm gonna sell some produce out of it or something like that. That's why I asked for, to, to have the full benefits of the C three zoning on it. Um, but my intentions right now is to get the boat storage up, get it rented and make enough money to pay my property taxes on it. Because they went up substantially.
No.
They went up substantially, so, you know.
And you, and you were doing so well.
I was doing so well, but, hey. I'm just trying to make a living, but, but that's, that's, that's pretty much it, you know. I, I went in and when I bought the property, it was, it was a mess. I mean, it was, apparently they planned to, to build some, uh, boat storage on it for. And it looked like they dragged everything from yellow bluff and just piled it on the lot. So, you know, it, it, it cost me quite a bit of money to have it removed and disposed of properly. But I did, and it looks a lot better, uh, you know. And I, I do take consideration of the surrounding neighbors, uh, and I don't wanna put an eyesore up for anybody there. Uh, it, it's gonna be well-kept and well-manicured, so, um, I'd ask for y'all's consideration into the rezoning of it.
I did glitched it. Ask you to give your name for the.
I'm sorry. I'm Jonathan Gaskin.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. You may be seated.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Meredith, you wanna, you have property, let me. Your property is within two hundred feet of this property, ma'am?
Yeah, um, I'm right across Islands Highway. My property's right here. Right across the corner of that property. So my name is Meredith Devendorf-Belford and, um, I am.
Excuse me, Ms. Devendorf, can you go back and point to that?
Yep, sure thing. I had an epic fail with the laser pointer in the last one, so I'm just gonna do it this way. So right here. So this is the subject property, Trade Hill Road, the intersection, and so we're directly across from that.
So you're across the road?
We're across the road. So we're within two hundred feet and then, uh, this is Tate Property, uh, Greens and.
For clarification, Mr. Chair, is that, I can't tell where she was pointing. Is that the three zero six zero eight four?
Uh, three zero six, oh, golly, I should've looked up the, uh, parcel number.
Right there.
I think that's where she was pointing.
That's where you were pointing at?
Um, no, it's, uh, it's not on there.
The number's in the blocks.
Okay. The one, the, okay.
That line right there.
Sorry, it, it has a new parcel number and I don't remember what it is. So, um, so again, I'm Meredith Devendorf-Belford. Um, I own, uh, property, uh, direct, directly across, um, Islands Highway from, uh, the proposed, uh, rezoning. Um, and Commissioner Stevens, this does feel a little bit like Groundhog Day and I think Commissioner Thrift was here as well. Um, so seventeen years ago, um, the boat sheds were, um, turned down because it is a residential neighborhood. Uh, there was concern about traffic, runoff, et cetera. Um, a couple of the neighbors are in there. A couple of the neighbors are in their 90s, they came to the planning commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. Couldn't make the return trip tonight, so I'm essentially here representing the, the local community. It is a residential community, it's a historic African-American landholding community of Trade Hill. And basically, if someone has a boat in that community, they have enough place to put their boat. And so that, the, the concern has been additional traffic, noise, runoff, and that it's potentially domino effect in the area where there would be more commercial development. In this particular case, the petitioner is asking to rezone a piece of property that is usable and economically viable in its current C two zoning. He's asking for C three because he put the building in the wrong place. And it is a pole barn, and I realize that he sunk those poles in concrete, but it's movable. And he has a large enough piece of property where he could disassemble what's there and move it on to the piece of property that is already properly zoned. The, there is plenty of call for having something that is a less intense commercial development there, that is still going to be profitable and would be of benefit to the community. There are people who have home-based businesses and that sort of thing. And, and you could also consider, and Jeff, please correct me if I'm wrong, but perhaps the conditional use of specifically an office building could be removed. And then that C two zoning that Mr. Gaskin could actually use the property as it's currently zoned, with a little bit more flexibility about what he could put there. But instead of creating this really large piece of property that is the most intensively commercial zoning that we have in a rural residential area. And consider the character of the area and also the neighbors who did not want this. And I believe Mr. McCartney is going to speak as well, I know he has a different opinion at this time, but I'm just stating my opinion. Another thing is that this property lies in the aquifer recharge area. And I'm sure Mr. Rickerson's office can verify where that is. And in the comprehensive land use plan, there is protection ordinance within that where we have to protect those areas because that water goes straight back into our aquifer. And speaking of water and sewer, this is the water that we end up drinking. And so having any kind of oil or other kinds of contaminants, even salt water that's getting washed into, to an aquifer recharge area, could actually contaminate the aquifer. And that is why you all have agreed, under the comprehensive land use plan, to protect the aquifer recharge areas. And so that's something also to consider. And I think that may have been my only, my only points. And again, I, I do ask that you consider not rezoning the property because he does have enough room to put something like this on the property that is already zoned. And that other property, it does have historic significance because it belonged to a woman named Rosa Lucas. And there's a long-sorted story behind how that ended up not in the hands of the church to whom she had given it. And so it is, for the community, it is a very important, important area, and it just deserves a little bit more respect, along with the residents of the community who live there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCartney, you wanna, you come state your name for the record too, sir, we appreciate it.
I thought I could get out of here real quick, but I guess not, so. I've got handouts for everybody, just to give you a little update. Meredith's right. That, I live about 100 yards on the other side of the road.
You didn't say it.
Between Trade Hill and Fort Mars. My name's Bruce McCartney.
Thank you, sir.
3931 Islands Highway. I'm a constitutionalist. I believe in the First Amendment, I believe in the Second Amendment, I believe in property rights. There was a misconception stated at the LPC meeting that I was opposed to the boat storage 17 years ago, when you were sitting over here somewhere. Over here, okay? Now, that one piece of property was already rezoned, and Jennifer wanted to rezone the property with the caveat on it for additional boat storage. Well, what she did, she dismantled 30- to 40-year-old boat storage at Yellow Bluff, moved it over to the property, like Mr. Gaskin said, and we looked at it for a long time. And she was gonna put additional on the B one side. You were very emphatic during that meeting, said, this has got to be office-only, all these chairs were filled. She could have started building boat storage on this, on the B two property. One thing stopped her. Henry Lovett, Mr. Paige Stevens, myself and Donald Singleton petitioned Mr. Dodd for a meeting. Mr. Dodd knew nothing about this dilapidated boat storage that was gonna be rebuilt there. And it would've been a ghetto 17 years ago. Jennifer was very adamant about putting a boat wash there as well. Now, I would have a store, you gotta have a wash. She didn't want to put a tank to catch the overflow, the petroleum products that would are going to, like Meredith says, pollute our aquifer. Mr. Dodd, at his great expense, canceled the lease, the contract he had with Jennifer. All that's in it, in this, I think it's a boat storage update. This was done 20 years ago, 17 years ago. He met with the four veterans and said, look, I didn't know, I was told everything is hunky-dory. I thought this was gonna be a, a upscale facility, but now I don't know the difference. So, like I say, he got out of the contract that he had with Ms. Fluonoy at his great expense. I mean, a lot of money. So here we come, 17 years later. Mr. Gaskin buys it from Gary Dodd's estate, and he said, boat storage look good. Besides being a constitutionalist, I believe in divine intervention. Mr. Gaskin saw those two oak trees there, said, yep, I can cut them suckers down. But then again, does the good Lord want me to cut them down? No, let me just move this thing back here 10 feet, and that's what happened. I know all the people that were here at the planning commission. I know all the people that were here at the last commission meeting 17 years ago. Ms. Harry Green had a concern about the buffer that buffers her property. Mr. Gaskin resolved that at last meeting. Talking with Harry, Harry, Henry Lovett, he said, man, I didn't know that. Now, he wasn't here, but his wife was here, and she went home and told him. Property rights, property rights. We just hit it on the head, property rights. Just like Meredith wanted to build a, build a sawmill, she put in petition to put a sawmill on her property. To me, that's her property, let her do it. There are ramifications that I would've been vocal about, the same way that I was vocal 17 years ago with Gary Dodd. This is a, if you look at the building, Joey's been out there, I know, I don't know how many Merins seen it. It's a quality building. Yes, the property was stolen from Rosa Lucas Estates by two attorneys in Savannah. One of them went to jail, 'cause that Rosa Lucas property wasn't the only one. I'm not sure if the other one went to jail, but I know he got disbarred. Yes, it was historical property. I live on historical property that Captain Dallas Smith and Ms. Ruth lived in, they built the house. I live on their property. His family comes down and say, oh, can we take a look? Sure, come on. Sooner or later, this property's gonna be covered up. Mine never will. Unfortunately, Rosa, or Jennifer started this thing with Gary 17 years ago. And Meredith's right, if it was built, and it was gonna be built, believe me. Matter of fact, Henry started the first wokeness, woke campaign. He wrote to every McDonald's in a three-county area, put his signature on, says, Gary Dodd is letting this, he's in a contract, and he's gonna destroy this historically black community by putting up a ghetto. And when Mr. Dodd got word from his other owners around, he said, hey, let's talk, guys. What the heck is going on? And we explained to him what was going on. We gotta move forward. I trust Mr. Gaskin, he lives in the community. He drives by there every day as he goes to work, 'cause he lives further down the road. He's putting up a quality building. If it stays a boat storage, how much traffic there gonna be? Negligible. People leave their boat parked in there, they'll take it out, maybe? Leave it out for a weekend and put it right back. They'll stay in there during the winter. We're not gonna have a lot of traffic, not like we would if there was gonna be a sawmill up the road from us. I trust him to do what he says. My neighbors think the same way, the ones I've talked to. Gary Stevens lives across the road from me.
But she's in favor now, or she doesn't oppose to you?
No. Jackie Stevens lives right next door to me in Mr. John's old house. She's not opposed to it.
Henry Lovett?
Henry Lovett's not opposed to it. So, I hope you stamp this thing go.
But that, that opposition has changed since the LCPC meeting.
Mr. Gaskin answered some questions that satisfied Ms. Harry Green, I believe. Because her main concern was the buffer. There's a, I don't know how wide it is. It's a huge, I don't know, what is it, 25, 50 feet wide wooded buffer. Noise, I don't know. How much noise it gonna be when somebody backs a boat in? These aren't, these aren't little John boats. I mean, he's making the thing that's, you know, that's some of these big boats. I hope you pass it. I hope you respect his property rights. Intervention that he moved it over a little bit, and I pray that you just go ahead and pass this thing.
If you maintain your position, sir, Commissioner Stevens, you have any questions before I?
Any, any other commissioner before?
Anyone else, question, the comments?
Yeah, I do.
Smell something burning, Joey.
Yeah, I do. Come on, we're taking to it.
I, I believe I've met you all the time, Mr. McCartney. Before this group was together, I served with ML Cofer and Reverend Anderson and Tracy, a couple more. But I met at the church right down from that corner, can't remember the name of it. Sunbury Missionary Baptist Church. I was asked to meet there on a Sunday because the people in that community didn't want a store that sold alcohol. They said they weren't, they weren't against a place that they could go and pick up a local bread or can of oil, or maybe get some gas, but they didn't want alcohol to be sold right in there. And I met with them, and I knew Paige, Warren Way was there, a pile of the folks. My daddy moved some houses for Meredith's mom. And that was the main concern, because they had young children, and they didn't want anything like that. And I, I told them, I said, well, I've never told anybody how I'm gonna vote on something. I met this gentleman at his uncle's funeral the other day, I didn't know him, but what he told me was the pictures that I saw and what you just mentioned. I believe he's gonna have a quality building. If he had a house there, he could put as many boats in the yard as he wanted to. So, I, I think you're doing the right thing by coming to us. I know it's in Commissioner Stevens' district, but if we had a 10,000-acre lake, they might have them in Gum Rancher and Hinesville. But we don't, we've got the, you know, the coast, there are people to go to, so it's just part of it. But I appreciate your comments, and I agree. I think that, you know, you did a good thing about moving it to save those trees, so.
Mr. Chairman, just-
Commissioner Frisian?
Just a quick question. I, I guess it's for Mr. Rickerson to get some clarification. One of the things is, we're saying that Mr. Gaskin moved it over. How many, how many feet was that moved over? Do you all know, from the, from the initial location where it was?
50 feet.
50 feet?
Yeah, it was, it was approved right here, and the building is 40 feet wide. So it was, this end of the building was on that property line, and it's moved over to there. So it's still 40 feet wide, and there's about a 10-foot setback. So we moved it 50 feet from where we approved it over into the other property.
Right.
Go back and show the picture.
And, and I've, I've seen it, sir, I appreciate it.
Can you see the oak trees?
Right, and that's what I was about to get, get back to. So, so basically, the petitioner moved it back to save the oak trees for the most part, am I correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Those, those oak trees right there on the property line.
Right, okay. And also, the petitioner owns both of those lots, correct?
Yes, he does.
And one of them's C two and the other one is C three?
C two and C three.
Never mind, that, that just seemed like some cleaning up that needs to be done. And then, I'm, I'm always concerned about what the citizens have to say. And I, I know we were talking about office space and traffic, but I'm in agreeance. I think if, if it was office space there, it'd be a lot more traffic than having a, a boat storage, in my opinion. So I'm, I'm just trying to see what, what are the concerns of, of the citizens? And see if, I mean, if, if they're, with all due respect, valid, or where do we go? Let's, to, to me, again, he, he owns both the lots. One of them's C two, and one of them's C three. And he just wants to make both of them C three. I, I don't know why we're here for 30 minutes over there.
Ms. Chairman, I just had a couple of questions too, 'cause I, I'm in agreement with what he's wanting to do. Because I do believe, even though those folks are bringing their boat to the island down there and putting it into water, either they're gonna drop it off here and go on back to Glenville, wherever they may be, or they're gonna take the boat back, or they can park it there and get it when they come back. But was there any, on the backside of the property, was there any opposition from those folks?
We, we did hear from some of the ladies they mentioned earlier that-
That was Harry Green.
Right.
They were just concerned about the buffer, and he's agreed to that. So, yeah, I, I, and I, you know, I understand why Mr. Gaskin would want one parcel, you know, and combine them together. I understand that completely. It's right thing to do.
One more thing?
Yes, sir.
Alonzo Walden is on, on the Plan Commission. Alonzo's a deacon at Sunbury-
Alabrian.
Brian, Brian, excuse me.
Right.
Got Walden on your mind.
He's a deacon at Sunbury Baptist Church. And one of the questions he asked from sitting right there was, I'm concerned about the traffic coming in front of the church on a Sunday. Well, what's happened in the last couple of years? There's two speed bumps on Trade Hill Road now. Anybody who drives, drive down, the boat down there, does it one time. That's it, because it's easier and quicker to come out of boat storage if it's built, go down Fort Mars Road, and you're there before you ever get there.
'Cause actually, we've had a couple of them to lose their boats hitting that bump.
I'm sorry?
We've had a couple of them to lose their boats when they hit the bump.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So, that took care of the, the traffic issue. Perhaps he can, perhaps Mr. Gaskin will put a sign up. If you go down Fort Mars Road, it's a lot quicker.
Are you ready? If all the other commissioners are through with-
And let me say this, 'cause Mrs. Belford didn't say this, she said it more than one time, about the comp plan and aquifer recharge, but really, we just talked-
time, about the comp plan and Aqua Recharge, but really, we're just talking a few feet from basically the same location, so whether the recharge is from the original spot, so it's the-
I understand that, I just want you to be cognizant of how well you make these decisions.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I, and I guess that is a question about, about the environmental standpoint. I mean, but again, that's not with us. This is a rezoning petition.
But you know what, but I think, I think it deserves mention-
Absolutely.
Because we have to look out for the welfare of the residents, especially those who have their own wells. Are there any regulations for this kind of facility that where someone would do inspection to ensure that they're not just pouring oil or-
I'm not aware of that.
How does that, is that not police? I guess it's more for our information than anything. Is that not policed by anyone?
Well, the, obviously, the EPD would regulate it if, if I were going to install wells or sewage systems on it. As it stands right now, the intention is for it to be dry storage-
Dry storage.
Possibly with electricity added to the building. The foundation is going to be concrete, so when the boats are parked, they will be parked on a concrete foundation. It's not going to be parked on dirt. Unfortunately, up the road, there is a boat repair business, and there's probably 50 boats-
Yeah.
Sitting on the dirt.
Yeah.
You know, around that, around that establishment, so.
Yes, sir. And that, of course, is not just for you, it's just for anyone who would be making the same request you're making, trying to educate the citizens, commissioners, how that would work, thinking about the safety of citizens. And listen, we're concerned about SNF and everything else too, and Liberty County, that could have some kind of-
It, it's for service in the community, there's, the development down at Yellow Bluff is astronomical. And obviously, they've got quite a bit of covenants and restrictions on that land. I know at, at one meeting, it was brought up that I don't need a boat storage to accommodate those who live outside of our community. I can assure you that I've got 10 bays that's going to be built, and every one of them is, is interest, of interest of people who live in Sunbury or at Yellow Bluff. I don't, I don't think I'd have to go outside the community, so it would benefit the community as well. So just take that into account if you would.
Community's growing, we know that.
Yes, sir, it's growing.
We know that. Want to provide as many amenities as we can, just want it done right and done well.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Chair, let me say this. If we're talking about protecting our water source, there's another piece of property within that area down Stevens Road. That should not be there. So if we haven't looked at that one, why we want to scrutinize what he's trying to do? Because this guy, I know you've got all antifreeze and everything else dripping, and it's going back into the recharge area already. And he's been doing it for years, but we cannot, seems like this county cannot go in and get it cleaned up. So I applaud you for what you're trying to do. Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion that we go ahead and rezon all of his property to C3.
Second.
All right, Mr. McCartney, here's, here's what, let me say this. You, you said on record, sir, that the Greens and the Lovett's and those people in that area are in, are not opposed to this project.
Say it again. Raise your hand if you want.
I, I do take exception, and I have a letter from Harry Green after that hearing.
Ms. Chair, Ms. Ms. Chair, but with all due respect, neither one of them are here to-
Honestly, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
But these people are not in agreement, speaking themselves, and I don't believe that any of us should be speaking for them.
And, and actually, and actually, I, I agree. I, I think the ones that are present should be the ones speaking, since there is, there is not any letters from them or anything like that, so with all due respect, I, I feel like-
But generally, what happens, you know this, is that the, they may not be here, but their voice is sitting right to your, to your right over there, so.
Absolutely. Or, I mean, it's, it's just-
He made the motion, so-
Right, but, but also Robert's rules, you know? That, that's the point that I'm making, but.
We had the motion in a second, didn't we?
Yes.
Yes, all right, and that's our discussion. Everybody's good? You good, sir? Okay, all in favor of the motion that's presented? Show your hands, please. All right. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Chair, turn the motion to come out of a public hearing.
No movement, Chair.
Second, all in favor, show your hands. Back in the regular session. Good healthy discussion, good healthy discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Not for him, huh?
How do you get that thing back up, the colors again? You know, you got all the colors all there about.
That's how he, I guess, somebody, Jeff Offis made that.
Pull that thing back up, we got all those colors on it again. You got one color up there, it looks like you were tied. I'm serious, it's, it's real.
It's on our, it's on our handout too.
Is it on the handout?
Yes, sir.
Ink and whatever.
Talking about the zoning map, right?
Yeah, I see across the road, there's that little bright light, light key that, what is that?
No.
It looks like C1 right here.
I think it-
R12.
R12. I see, I see what you're talking about. But I'm looking at the, at, at the hatch over here. I'd, I'd have to look at it on the property viewer to be sure.
What do you think it is, Belfer?
I, I think that's a dog breeder.
Dog breeder, so it's a, it's a commercial business over there.
Yes, sir, what?
Dog breeder, you think, someone that breeds dogs.
You mean like animals?
Hunting dogs, big breed hunting dogs, yeah.
Hunting.
So that would be C1?
I think it's C1. I mean, it, it kind of, it kind of looks like it matches that, or it could match R12. I, I'd have to look it up to see.
It looks like it matched R12.
Yeah.
Y'all need to find another color.
Thank you, sir, all right.
On the, on the, just, just to, just so you know, on the property viewer, if you go look at the property viewer and you hover over that property and click on it, it'll tell you and, and text what that zoning is. So if you, if you ever need to double check, you can go click on that, and it'll tell you.
I'll do that when I get home.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'd like to ride down there.
Mr. Brown, by there.
Down there as usual.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here to report on the county's June 2023 financial statements. Finance has performed a soft close of the books at year end. However, additional adjustments may be needed to fully close the year and get the trial balances ready for the auditors that are coming in October. As of the end of June, we have collected approximately 97% of our budgeted revenues for general fund. We have expended all of our budgeted expenditures plus an additional 12%. I will delve into some of these reasons for the overages for the general fund shortly, but the majority of this is a result of the county drawing down on those 2022 bond funds that were issued last June. If you turn the page to the general fund's balance sheet, the county has almost $29 million in assets, 4.5 million in liabilities, and 24.4 million in fund balance. We currently have 7.5 months of operating expenses in our unreserved fund balance, and this is very comparable to last year this time. It was 8.2. As part of the year-end close, Finance has gone through and made some budget adjustments for year-end. So on your general fund departmental expenditures report, there are no departments that are currently exceeding budget for the month of June. This was done, the budget adjustments were done to comply with the state requirements to adopt a balanced budget and to not have any single departments that exceed their adopted budget. We have taken overages from other departments and applied them to the departments that ran over. Also, if you turn to the next page, I've included a summary of what the budget adjustments were, and I will highlight just a few of those. The risk management department, as you're aware, the property and casualty insurance increased. Our policy period, the new year started May 1st, which pushed two months of this insurance expense into FY23. So it caused it to run over budget for the year. Also, the red speed camera, we've added a department within the general fund to capture all of the, the expenses for, for this red speed camera money that's collected at the school zones. A total of $420,000 was spent out of this account during FY23, but the offset is the revenue that it brought in. So the revenue and the expenses were adjusted for this purpose.
What, what was the revenue?
670.
Plus 200,000?
Yep.
Roughly?
Yep.
In, in those cameras, what's the shelf life on them?
Oh, goodness.
That's, that's the question. Technology switches every, every 10 minutes. Question for the Sheriff's Department. All right.
Okay, for capital leases, this shows that a big, large adjustment, but basically, it's the county applying, complying with Gatsby 87, which means we record all of our capital leases as an expense and as a revenue. So those are offsetting, but it's basically, the, the cost of the lease has to be shown as a liability and the revenue is like you're getting proceeds to go out and buy these assets, even though we're going to turn them in at the, the end of the lease. Accounting standards require us to, to book the revenue and receivables, so that offsets, but it was an adjustment that we needed to do for the audit. And also, we've hit on this before, but the other financing uses is the largest budget adjustment we needed to make for FY23. And this is a result of us drawing down the 2022 bonds that were issued in June of '22, but because the bonds were recorded in the general fund last year, last fiscal year, the expenses now, as we draw down, are recorded also in the general fund. At the end of June, we have drawn down a total of 6.7 million of the 12.5 million that was originally issued. And these, this 6.7 million was not previously budgeted for in FY23, so I had to like put it on the expenditures. But what really makes it stick out so much is that the county captured those bond revenues in FY22. Being issued in June, it caused us to have an excess revenues over expenditures from last year. And if I look at last year's financial statements, we had an increase in fund balance for the general fund of 11.25 million. So now this year, conversely, we have a deficit, but really, we're just using part of those bond proceeds that were captured in last year's fund balance. So it's just a timing. If they had been, if the bonds had been issued and also spent in the same fiscal year, there wouldn't be any kind of delay in the, in reporting the expenditures. Continuing on to solid waste, the solid waste fund ended the year with revenues over expenditures of almost $300,000. To date, we've collected 107% of budgeted revenues and spent approximately 100% of budget expenditures. I do want to point out that a portion of this revenue is also attributable to the, the bond proceeds from the general fund. The bond proceeds needed to reimburse the solid waste fund for the solid waste recycling center in FY23 was approximately 464,000. And looking at the solid waste departmental expenditures, there was only one that exceeded budget for disposal. This is due to waste hauling fees, and as the activity and the construction, all of these things increase in the county, so do our hauling fees that we're required to pay. But also, in turn, our revenue increases for this as well. With regards to the county's special revenue funds, I'm happy to say there are no departments that exceeded budget for the year. And if we flip over to the sales tax reports, I have included the revenue charts for the SPOS and T-SPOS in your, in your financial reports. For sales tax seven, for the month of June, we received over $997,000 in revenue. This was $74,000 more than we had budgeted for. And just a sneak peek into July and August, sales tax seven brought in over a million for both of those months as well.
Back up again, okay?
Yes, sir. As you recall, the county ended the SPOS six, and the last month of revenue that we received was April of 1.2 million. This was our second highest month of collection under SPOS six. And at the end of June, at the end of April, actually, we have collected a total of 61.7 million for the SPOS six, which is 7.7 million more than was originally anticipated or budgeted. And last but not least is T-SPOS. For the month of June, we received 951,000 in T-SPOS revenue. And also, sneak peek into July and August, T-SPOS brought in over a million both of those months forthcoming. We have collected over 29.6 million under the T-SPOS since it began, and it continues to do great. And has brought in 1.2 million in excess revenue from what was originally anticipated.
How do you, Mr. Brown, you got, you got your crystal ball on? T-SPOS is the one that sunsets, right?
T-SPOS is the one that sunsets, right.
How can we gauge the outcome from this point? Is there a way to even guesstimate what we're going to wind up based on the history?
Well, I can't collect. I believe the ceiling we set on that was 62 or 63 million.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm thinking, what, heck's this thing now?
And why you're doing that, Commissioners, too, I'm also, just to make observation that you know there's a deployment that's going on for, until spring, I think, of, of next year, so I'm interested to see if there's a dip in, in sale tax revenues, T-SPOS revenue, but we need-
Not currently.
Not currently, yeah.
If we track like we should, I think we'll hit, we'll be pretty close to the mark.
Okay.
63 million when it's over.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is my, let's go back, right here's a sales tax seven. And you got a footnote. The county paid $120,000.
City of Walthamville.
Walthamville, where did that, where did we grab that money in front to pay for them? And how it's going, I guess it's going to be paid back from us withholding.
Actually, I believe it was-
Walthamville funding?
Last week or the week, I think it was last week. They actually came over and brought us a check to pay it in full.
So this is scratched, you scratched?
As of August, yes. Yes, sir.
They discussed that in their, one of their meetings recently, they were going to do that, go ahead and just pay it.
I mean-
I happen to be, I happen to watch it on live stream, and I saw it.
We, we, we debited their account for it, which put them in the hole. And they were going to collect to the point of hitting back to zero and then start going into positive again, which really wasn't a problem for us with cash flow. But they decided, they just want to go ahead and-
Pay it off. Pay it off.
Get back to zero start, so.
Okay.
Now you wouldn't want to take money from them, would you, Commissioner?
Sure will.
I guess while we're in there looking at that number, Mr. Chairman, I see where you put a little money in down in that district. Put a little money in that district, so when he gets his, I bet he'll back up then.
We got some-
You all committed to that.
We got some IOUs out there.
Yep, yep, I'm on. Gum Rancher.
You all committed to that.
We're getting it.
We all joined right here, we just- That is a little money, we don't mind helping.
Matt, that looks good. I believe we're going to-
Go ahead, Smith.
I'm finished.
Is this the year end?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Overall, it's good.
If you were able to do the transfers comfortably, then that's a good sign.
Chair, I, I just have one, one question.
Going back to, to the fund balance, I know we're at seven point five. I guess two questions. Do you have some type of, I guess, where are we, when are we looking at statewide? I guess the health of our, our county compared to, to other ones with fund balance? Are we at average, above par? I'm assuming we're not below par. I, I remember the days when we were, from that standpoint, but in, in your opinion, you think we're at least above average or average?
I do, for, especially for months, which is June, where we're kind of straddling, um, the fiscal year. But our, as we get closer to the tax bills and that kinda thing, those are really our lean months. So those, we're gonna get down to the, you know, two and three months, which it, you know.
Right. And then, and then I, I guess another question is, I mean, I see where we have like, undesignated, you know, seven and a half months. Last year was eight point two, uh, but the difference in the budget from last year and this year is different. So I, I guess, what is that number, on average, per month, for us to?
Oh, for the number of months in fund balance?
No, I'm just saying, right. Like, prime example, last, last year is, is stating that, you know, we had eight point two months of fund balance, operational expenditure. This year is saying that we're at seven point five, but there's a difference in our budget from last year and this year.
But there's also a difference in the, the revenues that we're bringing in.
Right, so I, I guess I'm, I'm saying, on average, what is one month? What are we looking at?
It's fifteen, about twelve, five and a half, six million?
Per month, right, okay.
I've heard a lot of good compliments from people on, because they have the, um, SPOSS sign up at the new Hansville Fire Department. A lot of people have seen that sign, they're making good comments about, you know, how well that building looks and that it was done with SPOSS, so.
Excellent.
Speaking of, can we move the sign from, uh?
Yeah.
One of yours?
Ah, absolutely. I'm, I'm, I'm waiting on Trent to, to give an update, so I can see where else I'll, I'll move the signs at. And actually, in my opinion, I, I would like us to, to reevaluate our signage as well. Cause this, this is a county right next to us, their signs look exactly like ours.
Well, they'll think we're working for them.
I know, what's up with that, man?
We need to put one at Davidson Select Street, Commissioner Gillis, in that area, that's, that's been done. Getting good comments from people on, on the work that's been done, so. Just need to let folk know, SPOSS is, is the sponsor of those, those projects.
Have we got anything in here for the Highway eighty-four and Lake Street project, George? Side of Zach?
Hmm, no, sir.
But it's taking care of, it's been paid?
Yeah, you talking about for the acquisition of the pro- yeah, sir.
That's not in there, was that, was that done with sales tax one?
It was actually done with ARPA money that was allocated to the Health Department project, which was good.
Do we have that ARPA money anywhere, a balance on it?
We do, in fact, we can bring a sheet, she just updated those sheets, we can bring that in here again, I think, because it's been several months since y'all.
Can we, can we do the project that we talked about on South Bay, ARPA fund?
Uh, it would depend on what y'all, if y'all wanna move money from another project that you've already designated it for. But let us bring it back and y'all take another look at it and see if there's anything y'all wanna change.
EMS executive suite?
Oh, okay.
Right there on the corner.
Yeah.
Did you get that zone going, did you change?
They're actually going through the city this next week.
I know, you gotta go to, do I need to come to that meeting? No, okay.
I don't think so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Math.
Thank you.
You're doing a good job with the numbers.
Are you at the, are you at the year yet? Are you at the anniversary, are you close to the?
October.
October. Keep it going, keep it going, we'll check you off. Mr. Long? While he's coming, Jerry, you have to keep me reminded, so SPOSS seven just started. We're midterm of, uh, T-SPOSS?
Little over midterm.
So when do we start putting our heads together for, next year sometime?
Really next year, yes.
Our commissioners start getting your, which list, for lack of a better word, together for T-SPOSS?
All right, sir. All right, good evening, it's good to see everybody again. I'm gonna hit a few of the, uh, items on my report, just to kinda give you an update on a few of them. Uh, the water system on Lewis Fraser Road, he's just about finished putting in the ten inch water line. So he's making good progress with that, uh, then he'll fall back and get service laterals and, uh, different things like that. So he's still got a little bit of work to do, so it's not like he's about finished. But it looks good as he's going along and he's grassing and covering up as he's going.
Mr. Chair, Math, so we're not going to make that, that loop on, uh, where's, Macabre Road?
No, sir.
We're not gonna make that one?
The side roads, no, sir, we had to cut out the side roads to fit the money that we had.
Value engineering?
Yes, sir. Value engineering takes me right to the next one that I wanna talk about tonight is Allen Highway Box Cover Repair. Uh, we have about a million and a half of funds from FEMA to fix this. Um, we put this out to bid, uh, had some interest, um, but ultimately, we only had one bidder, uh, from S J Ham- S J Hamilton Construction. Uh, their bid was an amount of four million, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars, which we thought was really high. And it was the only bid. We talked to some other bidders that didn't bid it, and they thought it was high as well. The S J Hamilton, uh, Construction Company came back to me, um, and asked, um, if they could provide some value engineering to cut the price down, uh, cause they had some ideas of how to temporarily route the water around while we were building the box covert. And ultimately came down that he was only able to get it down to about three and a half million dollars. So there's no way for us to make up the difference with this bidder. Um, what we want to do is, uh, recommend that we reject all bids. Um, we're looking at some of the different options for bypassing the water, so that we can keep that price down and see if we can't get it.
That's what's causing the price to be?
That's causing what, that's what's causing a lot of the price going up. And we may have to look at, uh, using the, uh, old schoolhouse, old Sunbury School Road, little dirt road goes around, temporarily, uh, for maybe three or four days to get a bypass in, so we can start working on the box covert. So we gotta have some discussions on how we wanna approach that, but that could save us quite a bit of money doing that. So what I'd like to ask.
How many days that would be, Trent?
Three.
Three, four. But I, you know, I gotta, I gotta finish up all my, uh, design and verifications with, uh, several different people and their ideas before I can recommend that to you. But as far as tonight goes, I, I, I need to recommend that we, uh, reject the, the bid for, um, Allen's Highway Box Cover.
I just wanna throw this out. I know we don't hardly do work at night. I'm trying to look at the impact of the traffic.
Do it tonight. Yes, sir, that's, that's one of the thoughts and options.
Or the weekends. Cause you got a lot of people down there that still works and they, they, it's gonna create a problem, I mean, especially using the old Seabrook School Road.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, no, it does. And that road, and that part of the road is narrow. So we got a couple of nine degree turns that are like single lane.
Right.
You know, we'd have to, if we do it that way, we've gotta set up lead cars so that we can guide traffic that way. So there's a lot of things, a lot of hurdles I gotta cross before we go that way, of how we make that happen. So I've, I've avoided that, but, but I'm looking at the numbers and what it's costing me to avoid that. I'm thinking, I need to rethink a little bit.
I wanted to ask a question, um, of course, I realize that it's, it's gotta be fixed and you're actually gonna be, how far out, from the, under the shoulder of the road, Trent, that's there now?
So the box covert that's there now is a little over forty feet, and when we're said and done, it'll be seventy feet long? I don't know that quite answered your question, but.
Well, my, my thing is, um, and I've, I've said it time and time again, and I, I just wonder if you had, if money was ever gonna be available at one time or another, to widen that road. I'm talking about to widen it and even have some places in there where you could turn, um, like going into Sunbury or, you know, wherever else. Would, what is the, the dollar figure for a bridge there versus a box covert? Now, the reason I'm bringing that up is I know on E B Cooper, used to just be a little place and they wound up putting a bigger bridge in and then they widened that road. And it's, uh, it's just like we've got on, on Leroy Cofer Highway. I mean, I, I don't know what the.
We did look at a bridge.
If we could figure it out early and put a bridge in, because if you put a box covert up, you're still gonna have to come back and later add on each side of it.
Yes, sir. Uh, we did look at a bridge a long time ago, um, and the results of the bridge back then was more expensive than the box covert option that we have now. But then again, my box covert option, when we were thinking of it, was about a million and a half. So, um, you know, I, I don't mind going back and reevaluating to make sure a bridge works or doesn't work.
I mean, I don't know, I just, uh, I was noticing when I went to Glendale the other day in Comister Threens area, there's a lot of culverts that's under the road that, I mean, they were full of water. And of course, when they run over top of that, the aggregate would just fall through, and next thing you know, your road's down. I know a box covert works a whole lot better than a round pipe, but.
Yep.
Sometime in the future, we're gonna see more and more growth down there. It may not be in our lifetime, but, um.
Speak for yourself, please.
I like it to be in my lifetime, but.
What we have there is a nine by nine box covert, and we're going back with a ten by ten.
Well, that's what we got going.
Drinking that moonshine.
The woods, we see what's growing back there now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're exactly right.
Thousands of acres that's fixing to be developed, so just wanna make sure that, uh.
We'll, we'll run those numbers.
What's the discussion on the, um, this is well over your projected costs, and even if you do your value engineering, you only said you had set aside a million and a half, so. This, I don't care much value engineering, you're gonna still have a gap there, so what's the plan for bridging, no pun intended, the gap between those two?
It's a federal, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go, go ahead, Joe.
No, it was a federal mitigation grant that we got, and there was a million and a half, I think, for that grant, and then we had to match it. Our anticipated match is somewhere around two hundred and fifty to five hundred. So we don't, we, we don't have any sources to make up, you know, that much.
Two fifty's coming from T-SPOSS?
Actually, it was coming out of, uh, SPOSS six.
SPOSS six.
For drainage.
Okay.
So.
But you gotta make this work, then.
Well, we, we gotta look at some other alternatives, we really do.
I, I've, I've had conversations with a couple of my go-to contractors that, uh, um, build box culverts like this. And, uh, both of them just were busy and couldn't come to the, uh, mentor pre-proposal meeting. And so they didn't bid on it, and when they heard of the price, they were like, oh, my gosh. And, you know, they're thinking it's gonna be just shy of two million dollars.
Okay.
So, you know, they were thinking it was way high too, and I was like, yeah, I agree.
So you have, you optimistic then?
Yes, sir, and so, but I, but it does make me realize I've got to change my approach of, the temporary.
Okay.
So, but we do need a, a vote, I guess, to.
To reject the.
Reject the bid.
The bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chair, can you motion to reject the bid?
I'm moving, sir.
Second.
Motion second to reject the bid of four million, four fifty-nine thousand, seven twenty-five dollars, uh, from S J Hamilton Construction. Any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. Bid stands rejected, we'll start all over.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. We did get our MPDS permit turned in for, uh, the new five-year period. Had some good conversations with the, uh, the new people that are reviewing it. Uh, the lady who's been reviewing our plan for the last twenty years, uh, retired. Uh, Ms. Mildred Granderson retired about a month ago. So, uh, instead of Ms. Mildred coming down, uh, there was an audit for, uh, Allenhurst last week, and they sent three new people down in place of one Ms. Mildred. So they're really nice guys that are doing this, they, uh, have good head on their shoulders, and, uh, I feel good about kinda where we're heading with them. Uh, sidewalks, we did take the bids, uh, but it was post this. Got three bidders. Okay. Um, one was about three hundred and ninety, but he didn't turn in all his, any MBE stuff.
Yeah.
So what I'm doing is I've got, uh, the LISA, uh, reviewing all the MWBE requirements. And then I'll, I'll have the, uh, next Tuesday, when your packet comes out, I'll have the bid tabulation for it and my recommendations.
Hold up, we're, we're meeting next Tuesday?
Well, no, next Tuesday, the packets do.
He get the packet that early.
Okay.
I was gonna say.
Or next Thursday. Yeah, it's right around the corner. Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it hits early. But I, I, I'll show you what we have and, uh, but, you know, I, she's gotta finish the evaluation on the MWBE requirements before I can make a recommendation.
I appreciate that, and then, uh, after that, almost sounds like we might need to look at some value engineering as well as well.
Yes, sir.
Trent?
I got it, yes, sir.
Oh, and this, uh, did you do Highway seventeen in Beretton Ferry Roundabout? Could you shoot me the update that you did, so I could just?
Yeah. Yeah, basically, everything looks about the same as what you have. I just had to move it to a different software, is the biggest thing.
Okay.
So. Cause the state likes it in Microstation, and I draw everything in AutoCAD. It's kinda like driving a Ford versus a Chevy, you gotta switch cars.
How long does that review process take?
It takes a while.
Yeah.
So we're, we're on a, we're on a journey. Um, our archaeologist, uh, did finish up his, um, um, review of the site two weeks ago. So we're just about finished with ecology, we're just about finished with archaeology, archaeology. We have the phase two environmentals going on, so we're well along the way on the environmental side that DOT needs.
That's the one with the craters, right? We're still dealing with the craters. Yeah, I know you.
That's one with craters. We got that going on the roundabout, and we got that going on on Allen's Highway, that's taking place as we speak. Bill Carter Road is moving along okay. The plant wasn't mixing it right before the holiday. So we stopped them, everything is fine with what's on the ground, but we, it wasn't coming out like we wanted, so we stopped. They fixed it, came along today. Something else happened in the plant, and it burned the asphalt. Who knew you could burn asphalt? But it, it burned it, burned off the emulsion, so we had to stop and turn several trucks away. And I, I think we shut down, we've got about seven hundred feet more to go.
Yeah.
We'll have the binder in, um, they're planning on doing that tomorrow. And then I think next week, they're planning on trying to do the, uh, topping. And then they'll come along and do the, uh, shoulder work.
Because what, right now is what, three and a half, or three, is it, is it three, three inches, three and a half, somewhere around there?
It's thick, right, it's thick about three inches, then it's gonna be two inches on top of that.
On top of that.
So we got eight to ten inches of soil cement.
Right.
And we're gonna have five inches of asphalt on it.
Right.
So it's a pretty strong typical section. But we have a lot of traffic on our route.
Yeah.
Trent, you, you said that, um, you stopped them from, um, so that mean that you had to be on site, and I mean.
Yes, sir, we were on site, we were on site all the time when they were putting down asphalt.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Um, Lewis Frazier Road Bridge over Peacock Canal. Several things have happened since I wrote this. Um, we got them, uh, letter of no conflict with our utilities. I got the new set of plans, so they're just about finished with those. So we're well on the way of being told to go ahead and buy or get the right of way. Um, so much further along than where we thought we were when I wrote this. Um, so that's coming along good, and Claudia Lane, EPD approval. We're just seeing longer view times right now. Other than that, um, that's all I have. There, we're way to go in the contract to get started on Limerick Road, so he's supposed to be starting soon, and I'll, I'll try to pass that along to Max.
Do I need you or do I need Mr. Wells to look at some speed bumps on Yoma's Road? You, uh, Mr. Wells?
Well, he can do some. I mean, sometimes he does them, and sometimes I do them, so it depends on what contractor and who we have available to do the work. So, um, we're on Yoma's Road. You wanna, I mean, I, if you wanna just get with me, I'll show him where he need to go. If he wants to get somebody to put him in, then we'll let him handle it. If not, then I can try to add it to something we got going on. I usually try to, when I'm doing it, I try to add it to a contract I've got going on. Um, and when he's do it, doing it, he.
Okay.
Does it with something else he's got going on.
Let me get with him first. I think he's a whole lot cheaper than you, um.
He is. That's, that's very true.
He did.
Trent, I have a couple of questions. On, uh, Davis and Selette, um, they, uh, they hadn't striped it yet. I went down there a couple of days ago.
And they're not finished with the shoulders either.
Okay.
They told us they were finished with the shoulders, but they're not finished with the shoulders.
Okay.
So, and they got a rental, they, they contracted with Reynolds to try to fix the shoulders, and then he got out there and spilled a whole bunch of petroleum on the asphalt and.
The, the, the project looks good. I mean, I've got a lot of calls about it, but, um, we do need to make sure that they finish the shoulders and get the striping done.
Yes.
And, uh, the Claudia Lane, I got a call from Mr. Golden on that, and I'll just, um, I see your note on here that we're still waiting. What's the holdup on that? Do you know?
Other projects in front of us.
Okay.
We've been seeing a hundred and twenty-day turnaround on it. I mean, it's, it's taking a long time to get stuff back.
Claudia Lane Water, Waters Extension.
Yeah.
Okay, this, can you, um, follow up with them to see?
I'll check with them more.
Yeah, just let me know so I can call Mr. Golden.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else for me?
That's it, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Good evening.
You too, sir.
Recreation, Mr. Gross.
How are you, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I was asked to bring back the recreation fee schedule separated and, and, uh, so that you all could have it. Does everyone have a copy of it?
Yeah, I think we do.
Need, as, as I've separated, if you look at it, I have the pavilion rental fees, the, uh, department, uh, indoor facility rental fees, and, uh, Liberty County outdoor rental facility fees for private organizations and not, that are non-affiliated with Liberty County Recreation Department. Basically, I just need to know which direction we need to go, either keep the fees the same or go with the proposed, uh, fee structure.
Sir, Commissioner Hewitt.
Yeah, I, I don't, um, you know, not gonna go back and forth with the, um, whether we should, um, you know, the debate whether we should or should not raise fees, but I do have a couple of questions, um, for Raymond or, or Joey. Um, you know, I, I would like to know, um, the reasoning for the change. I mean, you, you, you do know that, um, something other than, you know, it's been a while. Um, you, you know, kinda like in the stores, if you, if there's a freeze in Florida, the price of orange juice goes up. Everyone knows that. You know, so wha- what's the reasoning, uh, for the fee change? And hopefully, it's not that because it's been three years or five years.
So, uh, as best I can remember, and y'all can help me, too, we were in a, I believe, a planning session of the commission, and we discussed reviewing all fees.
Okay.
Uh, not just recreation, but also, uh, plant, um.
Building license.
Construction fees and some of those. It wasn't just limited to recreation. These were the first ones to come to you.
Okay.
The other side of the total fee structure look was there was a separate discussion that y'all had last time, too, about organizations that aren't affiliated with the LCRD. So, it, those, those were kinda split as a separate discussion item, too.
Okay. And, um, you, you know, I know Raymond knows this, cause I, I used to work down there. I remember Raymond was a little nine-year-old boy. He was a good athlete, kinda hard-headed.
Decent, decent.
He was a good athlete. But, um, I, I, I guess my question is, I mean, y- yesterday was Labor Day, and let's say if some, they had a family reunion somewhere, and someone went to Miller Park or one of the outline, even James Brown Park.
Mm-hmm.
And they wanted to play softball, you know, uh, the family, you know, the.
Mm-hmm.
You know, um, the old versus the young, whatever, but a softball game. Is, is there a fee for, for that? So the fields are open?
The fields are open first, first serve, as long as nobody has reserved.
Open to the public unless someone reserves it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, um, so it is, recreation for that, as far as that goes, is free, but if someone, um, rented Miller Park, you know, for an event.
Mm-hmm.
And kids were, you know, didn't know about it, and they out there every Sunday playing, um, softball, they would have to leave when the people that paid the fee come.
That's part of the issue that we have at some of the, well, one in particular at, at Thomas Park. Because they've broken the, the fences and whatnot, if someone rents it out, they come there and somebody is already in there, then they have to, they have to leave if they can get them to leave.
Well, I, I guess if, like, if, if, um, if I rented Miller Park for Sunday at two o'clock.
Mm-hmm. The pavilion?
No, no, the, the softball field.
Okay.
Cause there's a fee on this thing for, for softball.
Right.
Right. So if I rented Miller Park to play softball this Sunday, you know, neighborhood game, it's free.
Right.
But if someone unbeknownst to me, if someone unbeknownst to me had it reserved, and they show up at two o'clock and say, hey, Gary, y'all got to move because I paid the fee, then, then I would have to leave.
Yes, sir.
So, but is there a sign posted that said field reserved or?
We, we can actually get those done. No, we don't have one right now. No.
No, I, I, no. You don't have that. But, but, but for the most part, those parks are.
Open to the public.
Just open to the public.
Open to the public.
Okay.
It's a rarity that somebody rents the, the field to, to have a sanctioned event or a approved event.
So, so anybody could go there?
Anybody can go there. Like, on Sundays, it's first come, first served, unless, like, during the week when we have activities.
Okay.
It's recreation first, and then we don't rent them or we don't allow anybody to get on them unless they've come and reserved them, except on Sundays when we don't have any activities going on.
Okay, and let's say on a Sunday, if someone got out there and, and, um, they's playing softball, just a neighborhood team.
Mm-hmm.
And it went into the night, and they turned the lights on, or is there a fee to turn the lights on?
We would have to turn the lights on.
You would have to turn the lights on, and there's a fee associated with that?
Yes, fifteen, twenty-dollar fee.
So, yeah, I mean, they could go there and play, and then if it got dark and they wanna keep on playing, they would have to.
They would have to run that through us, yes. We, we would have to send somebody out to, to, to cut the lights on because we don't give out keys to the lights anymore.
Okay, and is that the same for, um, for all the facilities, like the soccer fields at James Brown Park? Can anybody go out there and play soccer?
As long as we don't have anything going on, as long as it's not an organized, uh, entity, private entity out there using the fields, then they can go out there and use them.
So, so, so that, that there's a, there's a fee if you reserve it for an event, but it's free if you don't reserve it for an event?
If you're not a private organization.
So e- even, could a private organization go down there on Sunday and just start playing ball?
Because we don't have any, and that's why we're trying to institute the, 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 the change. Because if we don't, right now, if we don't have anybody on those fields, anybody can go use those fields.
Mm-hmm.
We don't know what's going on, and, and, and most, and sometimes what happens is, is people say it's a, a family event, and then next thing you know, we see a flyer where it's a organized event.
Mm-hmm.
That happens quite regularly at, uh, Brown Bay Park. They'll have a car show listed at a residence.
Mm-hmm.
But somehow it ends up.
On the park.
At the park.
Park.
So we're ju- we're just trying to regulate who is on those fields when it's possible, if somebody's having an organized event. The everyday public, if you want to go out there with your child or grandson or whatever and use the field on Sundays when we don't have anything, or even during the week when we don't have anything on the fields, you're free to do that.
Well, a- again, now, and I, I don't wanna, um, spend too, too much time on this, um, but if, if, if there was a, a family reunion yesterday because it was Labor Day.
Mm-hmm.
And the family had planned, say, hey, you know, we, we gonna go and play softball, if you wouldn't consider that an organized event?
What I would get, when you rent the field, say if you rent the pavilion.
I'm, I'm not saying rent. I mean, just, just.
If you have the, if you have cleared and used to use the pav- the facility, that's the pavilion only. Somebody else can come and use the field.
I'm not talking about the pavilion. I'm talking about the, the softball field.
I'm saying that's separated from each other.
But there's a fee on here for softball fields, right?
If you are, yeah, if you are a private entity.
Okay.
We, we, we did, um. Travel ball, um, the, the soldiers out on Fort Stewart who now come out to, to, to use the facility because what they're considered as PT, the commanding officers don't want them to do that, so they try and come out to, to come out to recre- Liberty County Recreation Department. So there was a group, there was a group that was using gum branch. We didn't even know about it as, as PT in the mornings. And we tell them they can't do that out there because it's not, nobody has come to us and told us about it.
So that, that's organized, is what that is?
Yes, yes.
We rented, um, Hillary Park, you know that?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, and, and my family asked me, we rented the pavilion, of course.
Mm-hmm.
And, of course, kids, playgrounds, other kids from neighborhood, they just came over, so they said, it's not ours. No, y'all, we didn't rent the playground. We just rented the, the pavilion. The playground softball field, it's open to, you know, to the general.
It's open to the public. If you having a family reunion at, at LIT, or I'll give you a better example. If you having a family reunion at, uh, Gil Park or, or Joseph Mill, where they got a baseball field out there, if you, if the pavilion was out there, you have access to the pavilion. If somebody comes and wants to get on the softball field, then they're welcome and open to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um, let's say like the, the track at James Brown Park, do you consider that a, a facility? Let's say like if.
The track at LIT?
What, what's LIT?
Liberty Independent Troop. That's where the track is.
No, the, well, the.
The walking trail?
The walking trail at James Brown Park, not at James Brown Park.
Okay.
Is, would that, um, be considered a facility that someone, let's say, people go walking early in the morning, exercising, right? But if some organization wanted to have an event, like a fundraiser.
Mm-hmm.
Would that take precedent over the, the people that's out there exercising?
If it, we tried to make sure that the event, and we tell everybody, the walking trails are open to the public. If somebody has a, like, we have a couple of people that have events to raise money for certain types of thing, walked on.
Right, right.
That's organized, and you'll, usually they're nonprofits.
Okay.
And we don't charge nonprofits. We try to work with them and make sure that the facility is free, but we still can't tell the old general public, they can't walk around the track.
Can't go ahead.
Can't walk around the walk trails.
But there, but there wouldn't be a fee for that because it's nonprofit.
Okay.
Okay, okay. And I, I guess that's the only question I have, but I, I do, I'll just say this, that, you know, um, I'm, I'm not in favor of a, of a change, and, and I know we gonna vote on it, you know, hopefully, uh, today, one way or another, and if the, the proposed changes take place, I would, uh, hope that, um, that we can advertise it, you know, not that, um, that we vote yesterday night, and, um, in the morning, it goes from a hundred to, to.
It doesn't take effect till January first.
January first, okay, okay.
That has reserved the facility, planned an event, the fees will not affect them at all.
Grandfather then.
I guess one, one, one last thing, Raymond. Um, you got softball fields and baseball fields. That, that's not the same thing?
It's, I'm just saying it's softball fields, baseball fields, it's all the same thing. We have a facility that's for softball, and we have a facility that's for baseball.
But you could play either one on either field, couldn't you?
You could, but it, it's just.
Soccer field and a football field.
Absolutely.
Come on, you're a top athlete around here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, alright.
It's just, it's just a determination or a specification that we at James Brown is softball.
Trust me, a softball field and a baseball field are the same.
Yes. The dimensions are different.
Yeah, right. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. I'm ready.
Mr. Chair, uh, uh, in, in my eyes, uh, I, I know we've discussed this proposal many times. We've used staples, we pull staples out. It's still the same. Uh, honestly, in my opinion, I would like to see, uh, our, uh, the facility rental rates stay the same. Uh, then, I, I think when this was initially even brought up to our attention, when we were talking about fees for everything, uh, from the recreational standpoint, I was under the impression that it was more focused on, on the organized, uh, s- side of it. You know, AAU teams, you know, private entities, they're being organized and, and trying to figure out a way to, uh, get them to pay into, to our facilities. But, I, I mean, so I guess that's all I gotta say. I, I'd rather see our, the facility rentals for our citizens to stay as such, and then we just address the, the portion. I don't know if we need to address that separately or collectively, however you all wanna do it, but I'm in favor, you know, our, our fees for our facilities to stay as they are at this present time.
Well, I feel the same way, Raymond. You're doing, uh, as good a job as you can, and you're within your budget.
Thank you.
Um, we do have some fund balance if the light bill was cut off or something, but there's one thing we are very fortunate of, very fortunate, and that is that we have that piece of property that is known as Liberty Independent Troop. I don't know that the price of it has gone up very much, has it, Joey? And I don't want the public, the National Guard, the Army, those folks that have served in this community to say, okay, y'all going up, and we're letting y'all have that for as little as nothing. So, it puts a little bit of a different view on things, you know? Uh, you're gonna try to go up and make money, and we're just kinda letting y'all do this, and we could take it back tomorrow morning at daylight, and y'all could find some other place to go. But, uh, I think as long as we getting back, paying your folks, and if you need to make a budget amendment later on to, for some reason, for lights or whatever, uh, I don't, somebody playing sports is, you know, there ought not be any shootings and carrying on, and I don't see any going on down there, but, I'd like to just see it stay the way it was, and, and let's move forward. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, just got one question for the Commissioner Frazier. You are appointed as the liaison between the rec and the commissioners, right?
I am, and I'm honored and privileged to serve.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Did you have any input with Mr. Gross on this?
Uh, uh, the director and ourselves have had numerous, uh, conversations about the proposal from the initial, but again, I'm just, I'm just one person. Uh, this was a collective effort from the board in entirety, and it was just a option that was requested from us to them, and I think it's just been back and forth. So, again, in, in my opinion, uh, just like Commissioner Walden was saying, from the standpoint of our citizens, let's keep it as, as such. Now, the question that I guess we have to find some type of, uh, median is, where do we go with the organized portion of it? Because would it be an organized majority? There is not one organized organization in Liberty County who are not charging those kids a fee to participate with, with that group. Not one. Trust me. I donate to them, and my son and my daughter plays for them. So what I'm saying is, if they're charging, and then, and, and I understand what, what they, they're on me all the time about it, because, you know, I, I know a lot of, a lot of those gentlemen, but what I try to explain to them as well is that you could go out there. I mean, yes, you all pay taxes, everyone pays taxes, I guess. I mean, yes, you, you all pay taxes, everyone pays taxes, I get it. But more importantly, whenever you are organizing, you, you, you could say it's a nonprofit. Or you could say it's for profit, either way, they're making a profit. That, that's, that's no, I haven't met a nonprofit that ever has not made any money. You know, that's, that's just for tax purposes, let's, let's be honest. So the point I'm saying is, where do we go from there with them being organized? Having these, these, these structured practices, these structured events. Is that fair to our citizens that are not paying? So I guess from, from my, my understanding, that's where, where we need to be focused at. Not, not just with the facility rental standpoint. I think we all understand, and I think from the rental situation, that we want to keep it as such. I mean, and let's just vote on that, let's.
Well, that's why I was just, Commissioner Frazier was, let's talk, we got it, three pages. And one of us for the pavilion, then the indoor facilities, and then private organizations. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
You broke it down three times, we asked you to go back and draw it back. So the third, third page is just for the organized. That are using our facilities, and these basically are fields in the pool under batting cage.
Mr. Raymond, do you have a way of really determining what group is organized and what group is?
Normally they come, normally they come, the parents will tell us or the coaches will come in and try to, to reserve a field. And that's how we determine, if you look at the bottom, it says all private organizations or independent contractors receiving payment for a play. For pet, play or practice must register with the L, LCRD. And when they do that, we'll know, we, we know who's out there, we know who's coaching AAU and travel ball. So they just try to get around the system and get out there on the fields at all times.
But more importantly, at the end, where it says, if the organization or entity is found to be charging participants without providing. The required documentation or information requested by the LCRD, the organization or entity will be suspended. Or banned from using all LCRD facilities. So I think that portion of it kind of makes sure that these organizations are gonna be on, on the up and up. Cause I mean, why try to treat, cheat the system one time whenever you mess around and be banned from, from, you know, using our.
And again, a lot of these organizations don't use, or kids that from Liberty County. Aren't the majority of the kids that are participating.
Right. But, but, and, and, and me personally, I, I think we are harping on, on that. If they from here, or they from there or elsewhere, is to, to me, that argument is, is a moot ar- argument. The point is, they are paying somebody that's an organized team. And then they're trying to come use our facilities for fee, for, for free. And, and my thing is, I'm not even saying that these are the correct numbers, but I, I don't, I don't think that's fair to the, to all the other taxpayers. They just say, okay, well, I'm a taxpayer, so my kid should be able to pay this particular organization some money. And they should be able to use our facility. But they don't even use, I don't sign my kids up for the rec and it's free. I, I pay a fee for my kids, well, well, y'all already know, y'all probably have my debit card on file, you see what I'm saying? And, but I, I pay it. So I, I don't, I don't understand why another group feels like they shouldn't have to pay a fee. When even if your kids are participating in recreational sports, you have to pay a fee. I mean, it's, and you and I both know, and that's a whole nother story, when, when it's time, we, we need to really focus on this recreation budget. You know, and, and be honest with you, and, and I'm not saying this just because he's here. We could look at our recreation budget and look at our, the recreation budgets with counties surrounding us. Just do it, we're, 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 we're not even close. We're, we're, we're not even close on, on what Bryan County is spending on their recreation. We're definitely not even in the, in the, in the, the same. We, we're not even gonna talk about Bullitt County, we're, we're not even gonna talk about that. But the point is, we, if we truly are here to try to make Liberty County a place where you could work. Live and play. Let's really start harping and really focus on where are we looking at for our recreation? And I think that's why, like last year, I even proposed, let's change it, just saying recreation, this is parks and recreation. This, this is a, a bigger portion of, of our community than I think we really give, give the homage to. So I think it's, it's time for us to really focus on it. Be honest with you, that's one reason why Bryan County is growing like that, their recreation facilities. That's why Richmond Hu- High School is who they are now. If, it's a lot of different determinative factors, but let me tell you. Anyone forty and under, whenever they move into a community.
Alright.
Um, I, I see, and that's what I'm saying, we, we could sit here and talk about s- stuff, other stuff for hours. But when it comes down to the hard stuff, we always want to sweep it under the rug, kick it down the street. So I guess we'll do the same thing again here, but thank you for your time. Are we ready to vote?
I would make a motion that we approve the page three. Of the documents that he gave us, the three options, I guess, or three fee scales. That we would approve page three for private organizations now affiliated. With the Liberty County Recreation Department to use our facility, to use what's listed here.
Second to that motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Motion is second, we approve page three as presented by Commissioner Frazier, seconded by Commissioner Frazier, and further discussion.
Chair, Mr. Gross.
Yes, sir.
I noticed that, and correct me, I noticed that Jim is not on page three. Is there a reason for that?
Well, because I tried to separate them indoor, outdoor facilities, the gymnasium, with the fees, with the gymnasium, which is. It probably should be on that back page, but I just tried to separate them indoor, outdoor. Those are, when you're gonna get with the new gym, you're gonna get people that wanting to come in and do tournaments and that type of stuff. So that's a whole nother ballgame, so that should be considered, but it's not on that back page.
Let's be looking at the, the renovation of the gym down there because it's, it's right upon us. So let's, let's go ahead and be looking at that, so it won't be no hesitation.
Could you use these, uh, proposed on page two and, um, for the gym, when the Harris Gym opened up?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, that's why I got it, I just didn't have it on that third page.
Yeah, but, but if you.
amend the motion to include.
The proposed for the gymnasium on page three, yeah, okay.
Include the gymnasium.
Okay. Still second it, sir?
Second that.
My, my second it still.
All in favor, it's your hand, please. Opposition. One, okay, alright, thank you, Mr. Gross, thank you.
I, I do want to say before you go, Raymond, I, I'm still don't know how you're gonna be able to, um, if it's free for, for the public. Can this go out there and start playing? And you said you can tell when a for-profit team is playing. They, they play different or they dress different or something?
They're probably having uniforms.
They probably, most of them have uniforms.
For practice?
For travel ball, yes, sir, that's why they charging the fees.
They practicing uniforms.
Good lord.
One day I went by, um, Johnny Frazier Park, Commissioner Gill, and I could tell, I don't know, you just could, I said, who is that group? They looked organized.
He called me, he called me, they were practicing football, y'all ain't practicing football.
It's like, what, ninety degree, ninety seven degree weather heater today, I said, is that our people? He said, no, that's not our people, it was the.
It was one of the travel ball teams.
And see, and, and that's, that's another concern that, that we have with them using our facilities. Because you and I both know, one, one of the schools here, a couple of weeks ago, canceled football practice because it was too hot. So we, we have to be mindful of that as well with having organized.
Hey, Mr. Brown, too, when we didn't have any liability to it, so I felt better, but man, I was shocked to have them out there in the heat.
But that's why we, we tell even the, the, the travel ball entities that, that participate, use our facilities. We try to get them to tell us when they're out there. So that we'll know who's out there, when they're out there, and if something happens, we know about it, we can say we knew they were out there.
Thank you, sir.
Spend four hundred thousand dollars on some cameras.
Jack Carter Park resurfacing.
I think, uh, really just a, um, I, I guess a matter of, of just making a motion in order to be able to. For a couple of commissioners to use some funds, uh, Commissioner Gilliard and Commissioner Walton, I believe. Want to use funds to help out the resurfacing of Jack Carter Park.
Yeah, um, thanks, Joey, uh, for putting that on the agenda. We had, um, four years ago, we painted lines on Jack Carter Park. But we probably should have, um, have sealed the cracks on, it's cracks on that court, all over that court. Probably in some places, a couple of inches wide, so it does need to be, um, resurfaced and, and, and then painted. So that's what, uh, that was in my district, it's in, um, Commissioner Walton's district now, but, um, we gonna, um, team up to, to fund that. Raymond gave us, um, a price on it, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and, um.
Do we have that approximate price?
I think it was right, twelve or thirteen thousand dollars, wasn't it, Raymond? But, but what we're do, we're, I guess we are, we are asking to use, um, splash funds. For recreation, and that, that, that's why we had to bring it.
That's right, it, it, it's just a procedural matter to move road funds over to the recreation line.
How you gonna term it, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, something like that?
You can, I think that's what you've done last time.
Yeah.
And, and Mr., Mr., excuse me, Mr. Chair, wh- while we at it, um, Mr. Gross, uh, can, can you look at and give us a, a guess, man? I, I know track season is coming up, you know, over there, about like the, the long jump and the triple jump and all of that. I know it's, it's a lot of cracks over there as well, so if we could look at that, alright, thank you.
You make your motion search for.
Yes, um, I'll just say so moved. Road funds, recreation. Uh, Jack Carter was, was there another one you want to do too?
Well, I mean, we wanted to move money to, um, to, uh, of course, I don't know, it may already be out there for the city of Flemington. We've got that money already.
Well, we hadn't yet because they didn't really, they hadn't bid it, but, but, but we have gone ahead and logged, that's in your road fund anyway. We've already made a note.
We got a, we got a so moved in a second, all in favor, not to exceed fifteen grand, so alright. Mr. Brown, any announcements that you have for us?
Only one, just a reminder that the county wild planting session is next week. From, uh, Thursday, the fourteenth, through half a day, Friday, the fifteenth.
And we, we gonna try to meet in the morning, uh, to look at these, uh, tomorrow morning, can you make it? You can't make it, we, I mean, we could, we could change, we, we just need to.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, I, what, 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 when can you make it?
Uh, let's do it in the morning, cause I've got to be up here ten o'clock for some interviews tomorrow anyway.
Eight o'clock, right here, work for you, you get your envelope?
Yeah.
Spe- speaking of that, is, Mr. Chair, is there any way, I, I know, I know we, we said we was gonna give it a test run a couple of months ago. Whenever we had to change the meeting time, but without a respect, uh, not just with the respect of our citizens. But also our department heads who've probably been here since eight o'clock this morning, and we're going at eight thirty. Is there any way possible, uh, we could reevaluate looking at the time that the meeting starts, set at six, push it up to five?
You know, we, we discussed that again in, um, planning workshop. Uh, but there was no consensus among the commissioners to, to change the, uh, meeting times, that's why we never did anything with it.
Okay.
Well, I knew we changed it, I mean, we did one time so me and Gary could get here when I had a full-time job. I could come whenever we want to, Gary, he's gonna have to come after.
But I, I mean, I, I could come now whenever it's scheduled, but, um, sometime I can, sometime I can't.
A- 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 again, I, I don't know, I'm not just saying about us, I'm just trying to keep our, our, our staff who's. Been here since eight o'clock this morning and it's, we're going on eight thirty. Well, nineish.
I can tell you who was here this morning at eight o'clock.
Never mind, yeah, it's, it's fine.
It's not about us all the time, seriously.
Back of my mind.